I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Ham?
Here.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Hmm.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, council, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I would just like to add environmental and franchise utilities committee reports, under committee and board reports, if we had one today.
Okay, thank you. No objection, council? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the October 14th, 2024 council meeting. Approval of the October 25th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $150,116.18. Approval of fiscal year '25 USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $155,700. Amount of fiscal year '25 USDA wastewater treatment debt in the amount of $927,540. Approval of fiscal year '25 USDA Step 2 debt in the amount of $336,612. Approval of the general obligation debt in the amount of $55,452. Acceptance of the beautification commission minutes. Acceptance of library board minutes. Approval of liquor license for the Lincoln Center. Approval of total claims in the amount of $374,097.90. We had two claims that were more than $75,000. One to EBS for health insurance premiums of $80,964.48. And one to Carl Chevrolet for vehicles in the amount of $102,179.44. Move to approve the consent agenda. Move by Esti.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Is there any discussion?
Yes, mayor, the consent agenda calls for approval of liquor license for Lincoln Center.
Mm-hmm.
Is that timely? I mean, it's now ordinance says only a second reading as to changing the zoning from R2 to mixed use. I think that's, seems to me it might be premature.
Did you address that, Rebecca?
Yeah, it won't be officially allowed to go through until the rezoning.
So...
Well, the other questions asked about that too, but...
What are we approving then?
Conditional liquor license.
Yeah, because really I don't approve it until there's a fire inspection done. There's other steps that have to be done. This is just council's approval.
So you're approving, providing all the things that she normally does, gets approved, and that it can go through.
I think it's a matter of efficiency to get things done and underway so that they can move forward once we approve to...
Nope.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, you cannot speak at this time. It's not an open, it's not an open forum.
I think it's just a matter of efficiency to get things done, T's crossed, I's done, in case it gets approved.
So I understand that I think, well, I'm going to vote then against the approval of the consent agenda so long as this particular item remains within the consent agenda. Otherwise, I would vote no.
Well, why don't we amend the motion to remove that from the consent agenda and deal with it separately?
I wouldn't make such a motion.
Second.
Okay, well, first of all, we have, we are, we already have, we have a motion on the floor, although I've not repeated the motion. So Esti, it's your motion. Do you want to change your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve the consent agenda except for the approval of the liquor license for Lincoln Center at this time.
And Mr. Flornoy, are you willing to second that motion? Okay. So the motion is to approve the consent agenda without the approval of the liquor license for the Lincoln Center at this time? Any other further discussion? None, please call the roll.
I did, I'm sorry, I did review the claims and they all seemed in order.
Thank you.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you, that was approved unanimously. We're going to go to public forum and appearances. Is Terry Baker here?
No, we have to deal with the Lincoln Center question.
Well, I thought would just come back. We're approving that without, so won't it come back at next meeting?
We're striking it from the agenda then.
I guess that's what I was, maybe I was an assumption. John, am I wrong?
No.
I'm okay?
You're okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so Terry Baker, is she here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. So Terry Baker, on behalf of Janice Peterson, and Janice is here too. This is a sculpture gift to the city.
Yes, and I don't know, did you get the pictures at all? Great. About a year ago, Werner Elker and I were invited to the Peterson homestead to view a sculpture that was created by Brian Peterson prior to his passing. Brian was a 30-year resident in Fairfield who did a lot of creative projects. Some of you may remember his 24-foot boat excursion around the world with biodiesel fuel, and he did all kinds of very interesting things. But when he passed away, he left this sculpture. And Janice has reached the point where she would really like to see the sculpture placed somewhere, obviously to honor Brian and the work that he's done, but also to keep art that is made in Fairfield in Fairfield. So we started working on a plan, how are we going to get this sculpture? Where are we going to put it? What are we going to do? And we brought the mayor into this discussion about possibilities, and we also brought the convention center board into the discussion. And they have unanimously approved to have the sculpture placed in the front of the convention center on their southeast section of lawn. And the sculpture itself is made out of scrap metal. It does have a few pieces that are loose that Janice has contracted an artist to come in and weld and finish some of those pieces. And we plan to have the piece sandblasted and coated for longevity. So we want this to be a piece that will last a long time. I am here tonight on Janice's behalf to ask that the city accept this gift. There is a small fundraising committee right now that is working on the foundation, the cost of the foundation, raising money for the foundation, and signage as well. We want to do a couple of different things. One is to have some signage honoring the artist and obviously telling the story about the artist. The other piece of the puzzle here is that, some of you may know the story about the Mazdan barns, that when they brought the horses over from Europe, they would put them on the train, the train, they would leave them off at the depot north of Howard Park and walk them down Main Street to the Mazdan barns. This horse will be along Main Street as though it's walking towards the Mazdan barns. It is the size of a life-size horse. It is quite magnificent to see.
It's bigger.
Yeah, it's, it's quite large. So it's a really amazing piece. So I am here tonight to ask that city council accept this gift for placement in front of the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center.
And because that is our property, that's why they are gifting it.
Does this sculpture have a title?
It's called "The Unfinished Horse."
So I'd make the motion that the city of Fairfield accept the gift of "The Unfinished Horse" from the Peterson family.
Okay, move by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy? Any discussion?
Well, it was very generous.
Yes.
And it's really lovely.
It is wonderful.
And I can't wait to see it placed there. I guess my, I, I'm sure you guys have already thought about any safety considerations and keeping it high enough so that people don't try to climb on it, right?
Well, it is, it is pretty high already.
Yeah, okay.
And we are looking into some different possibilities in terms of even landscaping, some different things that could be a deterrent. Obviously, we know you can't deter some things, you know, some people, but just, things will happen, but we're doing the best that we can to look at those solutions.
So the motion is to accept this gift? I'm sorry.
Has this ever been appraised?
I don't think so.
It hasn't been praised. I mean, I've had, there's a lot of conjecture that I could sell it for tens of thousands of dollars.
Has it ever been insured?
Insured, no.
Okay. Just, there are some things the city can do back for Janice once we accept the gift, including filling out some forms that IRS looks for as far as our acceptance of a gift. But that information would be helpful if there's any idea.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, see if we can do something. I'm, I'm sure she is not looking for any, any compensation for this, but I'm sure she is, totally appreciates your gratitude. And she would be happy to give a sneak peek to anybody who would like to come in and take a look at this. It's really magnificent.
Great, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to accept this gift from Janice, and we really appreciate it. It's beautiful, can't wait to see it in the reel. So go ahead and call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, it was approved unanimously. Thanks, Terry, thanks, Janice, again. Chris Sorflaton, are you here? Okay, since he's not here, we will go on. Matt Maza, the marquee sign for the old armory?
Hello. My name is Stephen Cardinal, I'm here for Matt Maza. And yeah, we're seeking our eight-inch approval for our LED screen on our marquee that we presented to you guys last time, it was a couple meetings ago. And we were requested to provide a 3D rendering of the building with the marquee on it, and so we provided that. And here I am.
Okay, and this was to go to committee, right? And you can see the picture of it there, everybody.
So my goal is to get a property committee together this week and address the question.
Okay.
So if Mr. Gandy and Ms. Esti can meet this week, we'll do that.
Great, just finish it up.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you for the drawings, it's great.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then Ron Blair, is Ron here? Oh, there you are.
I didn't inform the... I'm going to read you my little write-up. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the Natty Conservation Committee, I think you all know that. We're seeking your support and approval on a pre-application for an urban waterland grant, which will allow us to help protect the Bonneville, Lake Bonneville watershed area. The conservation practices would take place at the very western edge of the city-owned Natty Prairie land. And we've provided you with materials from French Renecor showing the project and its projected costs. No funds would be asked for from the city. And that's the big picture overview, if you have any questions for me.
Where exactly is the west edge?
I'm sorry?
Where is the, you said it would, the west edge of the...
The west edge is, you see where Silver Lakes, I guess you can sort of see that sort of urbanized area, so it is...
Is that B Street to the right of that?
B Street is over to the...
East.
To the left of the...
Yeah.
There's the, there it is, right where that arrow is going.
Okay.
That's where the, that's the western edge of the Natty Prairie.
Okay.
And we, now, we've been predominantly, the Natty Conservation Committee's been doing work with timberland and forest and prairie, but we're also concerned with water conservation and quality of water in both Lake Bonneville and Lake Pleasant. And this is one of our first steps towards helping make sure that that water is always clean and safe for fish and for swimmers and...
Can you, Ron?
Yes.
Just tell us how that works.
Yeah.
How what works?
How it keeps it safe and clean and...
Well, okay, so then, so looking at...
In three sentences or less.
Yeah.
Was that?
In three sentences or less.
Well, okay, well, so if you look at that handout that had the watershed overview of the whole watershed, you just have to, have to carefully watch what is filtering, what land it's filtering through on its way to the lake. And, and, you know, we had Amy Buska from the IDAL, Iowa Department of Ag and Land Sewership, really supports this wetland and conservation practices. And Steve Pedrick, and they're more experts than I, than I am, Doug, but you're just talking about, in this particular instance, this particular Phase 1, you're talking about filtering water coming off of one side, it's like the continental divide of the Natty land, water that would start to flow down to the west and allow erosion particles and...
It captures the sediment, right?
That's it, there you go. That's what the was...
So does it be dredged on a river basis?
No, actually, it filters and it settles and it filters, and then the water runs down through all five of those, and it would go into the city-owned land, which is west of the Natty Prairie, south of Silver Lakes, but west of the Natty Prairie. So the water would filter into there and then eventually filter through to the lake.
Okay.
And this is a phased project, so this is Phase 1.
So I make the motion to approve the application for a water quality initiative grant.
Second.
By the Natty Committee.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Esti to approve this water quality initiative grant for the Natty land. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron, thanks for all your work on that. Next item is a public hearing on the matter of the plan specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate of the fire station. Melanie, do you want to say anything about this before I open the public hearing?
So attached to your agenda are a portion of the plan specifications and the form of contract. This is the specifications manual, so that's why not all of it is attached, so that you can, so that you could actually open it. The, as far as the contract, or the spec, as far as the form of contract, it is an AIA form of contract that we have used before. I have reviewed it. Actually, it's held up in court before, so it is a document that we've used before and is good, we, good to recommend to move forward. The rest of the specifications, nothing, I mean, out of the ordinary for the council to be aware of on that. As far as the notice to bidders and other important information, so the bids are due on November 14th at 2:00 PM in the city, at city hall. We hope between then and your November 25th meeting that we would have a recommendation to council on the low bidder. That would give us time to finalize the contract before the end of the calendar year. Then shortly, also then on your, in your council packets there includes the preliminary schedule. So to proceed then, a notice to proceed and a pre-construction meeting would be held shortly after the first year, allowing the contractor to begin ordering materials. There's about a, oh, what did they say, about a three-month lead time on the construction, or sorry, the concrete panels that are a majority of the construction of the walls. And so that would allow for groundbreaking in the spring and then start to see some vertical improvements very quickly into the spring with that schedule. The anticipated substantial completion date, or the contract completion date, is April of '26. Then the estimate is also attached, so the estimated building construction is 6.9 million, and this is the number that our budget is based off of. Or has been based off of up to this point, so it's within the budget.
Mel, your plans bundle that you have there, that's based on what we had a presentation from the engineers, I don't know if it was one or two meetings ago? But the specs are as they presented them then, right?
Yeah, so they went over it, I mean, in five minutes or less, but I'd be certain any of the, Rebecca, Doug, myself, Brett, would be willing to answer any questions. There's nothing, you know, drastically different than what we've discussed. The training tower is still part of it, you know, we have the bays, the, there's no portions of the building that are being proposed to be a shell or unfinished. The, a sloped roof on a majority of the building, so, yeah, it's what is presented from the last meeting. And then I have the specific, or the plans are back in the conference room, and again, they're this thick, so we didn't attach all of them to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak regarding the fire station plans, specifications, form of contract, and the engineer's estimate? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I do have one more thing. So the city has submitted a Board of Adjustment application for the height of the building, or specifically related to the setbacks. The training tower does reach a total of approximately 40 feet, and so the setbacks that are required due to that additional height don't meet the residential setbacks. The area that it is in is actually zone of business, but it's adjacent, on the other side of the alley is residential, and so those notice, notices to the people in the area went out, I don't know if they went out today, but they will be going out this week, and the Board of Adjustment meeting will be coming up. But as an essential service, John is recommending a special exception, so hopefully everything goes well, but we will let the Board of Adjustment proceed with that.
Great.
We run into the special exception sometime with this 30-foot limitation, and it's a public service building. Similar question came up years ago over at the tower on the corner of the courthouse.
Yeah.
It's communication covered, it's used by every emergency group in the community, and we always treated that as a special exception.
And between the churches and the civic center, there's about six buildings that are this tall or taller in a few block radius, so we've provided Board of Adjustment with some additional information.
Board of Adjustment's decision is binding?
And yes.
So the only appeal to that would be through the court system?
Yes.
Okay. So the action item again would be to approve this. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Ham. The motion is to approve the plans and specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for the fire station. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously. The next two action items have to do with North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area. We have a couple agreements that we have to consider, and the first one is consideration to enter into a joint agreement with Jefferson County, Iowa, for the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area.
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, again, the action item is to approve the entering into agreement with Jefferson County, Iowa, for the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area. Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you, approved unanimously. And the second one is consideration to enter into a joint agreement with Marjorie Vatic City for North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area, and this is because, you know, we have, we share that two-mile radius, so we have to agree with them as well, so. Would take a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions? Okay, motion is to enter into the agreement with Marjorie Vatic City for the North Campus Ridge Urban Renewal Area. Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you, approved unanimously. Okay. Next item is a public hearing on the matter of rezoning Lincoln School area from an R2 general to a mixed-use district. And I want to point out that in, it's been pointed out to me that this ultimately is not necessarily going over the details of all the plans that the Huffman's have, but I know that is of concern, but we're really, the councils really looking, looking at this R2 general residence district to the mixed use. So under all the different areas here, there were several documents, the neighbors of Lincoln School, the site assessment memo, the, the map, planning and zoning minutes in the recommendation. Melanie, do you want to go over your notes that you wrote on here before I open the public hearing?
Do you want me to?
Well, I, you know, I think it's useful, because I think you had several things that were of clarification. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, so, um, okay, so...
Hey, Mel, before you go, hey, Jason, you might put up the map there, just so people can see it while she's talking.
Click on the rezoning of Lincoln School, the, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So I didn't prepare anything, so I might read some items directly from this, I don't mean to insult your intelligence. But, so the action before the council is to rezone what equates to about 3.3 square blocks. Similarly to how there is not a process for monitoring the conversion of single-family homes to multifamily homes, the city's actions are often reactionary regarding enforcement measures. As the Planning and Zoning Commission stated, there is no legal reason not to rezone these properties. For that reason, I gave you some information regarding the mixed use. It was created in early, it was finalized in early 2021, but its first public hearings were held about four, four years ago this week. Some of the public hearings were actually held in the neighborhood. They were held at what at the time was known as the Old Harper Brush Building, but what I want to point out is in a four, what, I mean, short four years when it comes to government planning, that building is now locally known as Redtovia. And through the mixed use, or at least I feel like through the mixed use zoning, that that building went from being drastically underutilized to well-utilized, to the point that it's even no longer known as what that building used to be. And for a small town that likes to think of things the way it used to be, I think that's great strides. As far as what has happened to date, the... there has been no approvals for any permits or activities for the, specifically Lincoln Center, that short of the rezoning and putting the utilities in their name, there has been no other city action regarding this property. And that is specifically, that is mainly because the city does not have a lot of procedures except for the reactionary procedures once an activity is already up and running. So until there is a business in place and a sign is up, we don't have a business registration process. However, I did go ahead and do a site review. That was requested by the council members. So without there being any new construction, the site review normally does not happen. Parking does not normally get checked on existing construction and only is reviewed on new construction. So Brett Farrell and I did a preliminary occupancy calculation. We do want to recheck these numbers. So we're not going to consider these sets until we've rechecked all of those. But based off of the plan that Huffman's provided as part of the occupancy calculations that were done this last week, their first year, they intend to use 70, approximately 7,500 square feet of the approximately 12,000 square foot usable space. Based off of the occupancy calculations, that's about 869 individuals using the assembly classification without fixed seating. Future occupancy, assuming all of the spaces used, would be 1,157 people. This is because when there, some of those classrooms only have one exit. And so even though the space can physically hold more, they're limited to 49 people per classroom because there's only one exit. And those are, again, we would like to double-check those numbers. But those were our calculations based off of reading the fire code today and the last couple days. On the exterior lighting, I want to point out the mixed-use zone is the only zone in city code that has outdoor lighting specifications. 2054-080 does have specifications regarding the foot handles at the property line. Any existing lighting would be considered existing nonconforming. But any future lighting would have to meet this specification. The city staff reviewed the streetlights in the area and determined that the street lighting is spaced in a similar spacing as other commercial and residential neighborhoods throughout the community. And we would not recommend additional street lighting at the city's expense. On the traffic, so the DOT does traffic counts every four years. They do not do it on every street. But Fourth Street is a major thoroughfare through the community. And there were counts on Fourth Street. Fourth Street, south of Merrill, between Merrill and Kirkwood, had an average daily traffic count of 2,560 vehicles per day. Fourth Street, north of Merrill, which is considered Highway 1, had 4,100. So a fair amount of traffic continues on straight rather than turning on Highway 1. There were no traffic counts on Stone. And I guess our recommendation, and I reviewed this with Joe Heard, that even though there's an offset between Stone at Fourth, Fourth has relatively little grade change causing no site obstructions. And with the amount of traffic that's already on Fourth, a rollout stop sign would be more of a hazard than a help. Yes, we understand that there was rollout stop sign when there was school there. And if there became a large number of pedestrians crossing at that intersection, that would change our opinion. But the amount of parking that would be available east of Fourth Street would not justify a rollout stop sign at this point. Merrill Avenue west of Fourth Street is 27 feet wide with, currently with no parking on one side. There are very few driveways along this section and a flashing red at Merrill and Fourth. Merrill, and in our opinion, Merrill would be a safe street for on-street parking. The seal coat portions of Merrill and Orchard Place are approximately 18 feet wide. So I was wrong. It was not an alley. Possibly it was a half, half of a right-of-way. And so we would suggest that that those seal coat portions get barricaded off, perhaps with some reflective cones that direct individuals of the center to, you know, parking this way and emphasizing reflective cones. Emergency services could easily move the cones or run them over. They're not going to stop a fire truck. So there's no concern with those causing any issues. The residents could continue to access the area through the alley that's between Merrill and Carpenter, which was often used during the road construction of Merrill and Carpenter. As far as parking, 2072 of the city code dictates the parking. Our city code describes parking based off of the square foot area of the building, not necessarily the square, the usable square foot. And so those are calculated within here. I would say that there has been, we have several places throughout the city that do not meet our parking requirements. And, you know, our civic center would be one example that anyone requesting a variance to this parking ordinance could easily point to. People try their best, but our code was written in 1982 with, I think, an update in the 90s. I know that many cities, and I have some information back there when I was doing this research, they are reducing their parking requirements. The theory is that a business success is determined on the ability to serve their customers and that the business owner can make those decisions depending on the customers that they serve. If it's a, you know, a business that serves college students and the college students all get there by bicycle, they're not going to need as much parking. Why should the city dictate that? And so there are cities that have gone to not dictating the parking requirements at all. So in my conclusion to this is that the action before you is a rezone and that many of the things that I've discussed, the city does not have a mechanism for enforcing at this time. Again, most of our actions are reactionary. And we, but the mixed use was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Department when we found out about the sale because it has been shown to redevelop previously underutilized areas.
Okay. Thanks for doing that. I know that was a lot of information. Do you want to ask your question? Now you want me to open the public hearing?
You do that first, then I'll.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Can I ask Melanie one question?
Well, maybe you should ask my question first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was going to add just one question really quick. The red zone.
One question, that's all you do.
That's all I've got. The request, the requested mixed-use red zone area up there right now. I know some of those that aren't included in it were not included previously because they were rental properties and we hadn't contacted the owners of the property. Has that changed at all since?
No.
No?
No. Again, because I'm, Hoffman's handled collecting all those signatures, not staff. And so I think with the public hearing, I can't, I don't want to speak for you, but I think she's had other things to do last few weeks.
I was just curious if there are any yes or no's since then, so, okay.
Doug, your question?
Yes. All right. So under the mixed-use district ordinance, there are two categories of uses. One is permitted uses, in which case you can go in without any permission or permit requirement and you can build your business and go to work, right? And the other one is conditional use, where you have to go before the city and get conditions set for your business prior to putting the business into place. Is that correct?
Prior being the optimal word there.
Well, I guess my question is, who makes the decision whether it's a permitted or a conditional use? And when is that decision made?
John, maybe you can answer that one better. I have always been under the assumption that staff has that call, but.
That's the way it's intended. So it starts in the planning office. They take a look. If there's a disagreement, the planning office is going to construe it ordinarily, giving the property owner the benefit of interpretation. If other people are aggrieved by that, they can ask the Board of Adjustment to involve. If the property owner that applied is agreed by that, they can go to the Board of Adjustment.
Just so the public knows the process, the Huffman's would bring, or the business owner would bring a plan to Planning and Zoning and they would decide whether it's a permitted or conditional use first?
That's how it would start.
Okay. And then if the property, if the business owner objects to the decision that Planning and Zoning makes, they go to the Board of Adjustment as an appeal?
That's the way it's set up.
Okay. But if the business owner agrees with the Planning and Zoning's decision, they can go ahead and proceed with their plans?
Correct. But there's still, there's a notice that goes out to the neighbors.
Yeah, okay. All that stuff gets taken care of. But I'm thinking about the bigger picture. So if it's a conditional use, that's approved by Planning and Zoning and the business owner agrees with that?
No, staff doesn't approve a conditional use.
Who would?
That would only go to the Board of Adjustment.
So the Planning and Zoning would reject it as a permitted use and then it would go to Board of Adjustment for consideration as a conditional use?
Correct.
Then who sets up the conditions for the conditional use?
Sometimes they're proposed by the owner. Sometimes there's a question from somebody that objects other than the owner. And sometimes it's somebody on the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, through this whole process, if things are going to go according to the way the business owner would like and a member of the public or members of the public object, what is their, what's their course of action?
They, well, they have the same avenue whether they're the objecting owner, the objecting property neighbor. It goes Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment has to make findings that are somewhat like findings beyond a reasonable doubt in court. They have to have reasons that are stated in writing and there are also a group of reasons set out in the Board of Adjustment procedures in our code. I don't have them memorized, but I tell you, there's a group of them. And then you, after that's been handled at the Board of Adjustment level, either party has the right to take the Board of Adjustment determination to District Court.
Okay.
And District Court applies the same standard as the Board of Adjustment does. Doesn't always agree with what the Board of Adjustment concluded.
So the Board of Adjustment uses the same standard as the judicial system does? It's beyond a reasonable doubt?
Well, it's a little bit different than that, but it's, it's a standard that is higher than just the most probable or the civil standard, which is a lesser standard.
Okay. And so the last questions I have would be, Planning and Zoning cannot be overruled by council, but we can ask them to reconsider a decision they make?
Or the adjustment.
Well, the Planning and Zoning I'm talking about right now. We can ask them to reconsider?
Staff or the commission? Planning and Zoning commission or Planning and Zoning staff?
Well, who was making the decision in this particular situation?
So planning, as John said, Planning and Zoning staff would make the decision.
Right. Doesn't the board then take that up?
Yeah, the Planning and Zoning commission, not to be confused with the Planning Office staff, is a policymaking board. The Planning and Zoning commission, they look at things. They make recommendations. They also come up with defined policy paragraphs and so forth for different ways we interpret stuff. When it's at the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment is actually the quasi-judicial or fact-finding group that is different than what the role of Planning and Zoning.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify for the public.
Right. But I'm trying to understand your question. Just ask it.
Planning and Zoning makes a recommendation to council, for example.
Planning and Zoning commission.
Commission, I'm sorry. And we cannot overturn their decision, but we can send it back to them and ask them to reconsider?
We have a recommendation here.
It's a recommendation.
Planning and Zoning commission is a recommendation.
Which we have.
So we can turn that over if we want?
Absolutely.
Okay. But the Board of Adjustments, we cannot, we cannot turn over our decision by the Board of Adjustments?
Right.
Okay.
You could rewrite your Board of Adjustment ordinance if you want to.
But we would.
Redine some standards.
By just not approving the ordinance?
Right.
That's in front of us now that we're going to vote on?
No.
Just not be adopting the recommendation.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
I just, that's all.
Those are good questions. Makes it clarif, clear, procedural clarification. I think that's good. So Paul, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So Melanie, I think we're making, I believe at the top of your presentation, you're making some comparison to what is now the Redtopia Building or Iowa Food Collective Building, which I think has been a, turned out to be a really good transfers of use from a manufacturing facility to what it is now. Do you know what the traffic flow is or, first, do you know what the, I'm not expecting to know this, but I'll just ask anyway, the number of parking spaces that are now at that building?
Not a lot.
Not enough.
I know they have two parking lots, but I don't know off the top of my head because they have the one off of Fourth Street and the one off of Third Street.
And do you know what the traffic flow is or traffic count is for people going to that building typical day? I would expect to.
Yeah, no, I don't.
The thing is, though, it wasn't, it was a manufacturing facility. It was a factory before it moved to this. So I don't, I doubt, probably, I don't know what the history is, but I suspect there was not that much community objection or concern because you had a factory going, turning into a series of restaurants.
Well, it was vacant for seven years.
Right.
So there was a lot of objection, actually. There, and that is why there is the section about the lighting. And regarding the parking, there was a conditional use put on it regarding the parking, for the parking to be revisited a year after the restaurants opened and if there was continued concern with the parking lot capacity. And I know that there was some, there was some concern when initially, when the businesses were both open for multiple days a week. But then when they became open on, like, I don't know if the business, if the restaurants are now open like on different days or something like that, but once they are at their schedule where they're at now, the problem with parking decreased because now I think the restaurants are open on different days and the parking situation's much better. So we did reach out to the owners, like I said, a year or so afterwards to touch base on the parking.
So could you go back and explain, tell me a little bit about how that conditional, you say a conditional use was placed? When was that placed?
And I don't know if it was, and I would have to look it up. I don't know if it was a conditional use or if it was just a recommendation by Planning and Zoning because the owners of Redtopia really worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission to help shape the planning or the mixed-use ordinance. And so their rezoning, like I said, they hosted a lot of some public meetings and things like that. And so like I said, when concerns came up in the public meetings regarding the rezoning, a lot of it was specifically related to their building. And so there was, I would have to double-check the minutes, but, because they didn't go to Board of Adjustment. So it might have just been a note or a comment by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the parking. But I'd have to double-check because it didn't go to the Board of Adjustment. So it wouldn't have been a conditional use. It would have just been a comment.
I kind of remember we had meetings down there so people could go in and see what they're doing and kind of get a sense of what their plans were in the future. And, and there could have been more people than maybe what was, than what we had room for here, too. So.
The conversations this summer about Grimes and Hempstead on Second before the underpass was that very thing about the parking there. Because parking between those two east-west streets two east-west streets is complicating people who are coming out of that, those parking lots and feeding back in and trying to go north again under the underpass. So that's where we moved to remove the parking just on that single block on both sides so that the view both north and south there is better. Again, these are just the growing pains of having an active business, especially over meal times and people coming and going on both busy streets, just changing traffic. So that was what we were just considering, the traffic now that is there that wasn't there before when it was an office space that was more settled. But now people coming and going for meals and things has changed that intersection a lot or intersections because of that slight slope there.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And what I'm going to ask is that you keep your comments to a couple of minutes, state who you are and approximately where you live. You don't have to give your exact address if you don't feel comfortable, but it's always nice to know whether you live on Orchard or Merrill or, you know, whatever. So, and if you've heard, I know Mr. Campbell's speaking for a lot of the neighbors, which we appreciate getting it succinct. And so if he's addressed anybody else's comments, you don't need to repeat them. So we'll open the public hearing and I guess Mr. Campbell will start off.
Thank you, Melanie, for your report on the site. It really gave great information. The handout that I, oh, Alex Campbell, Orchard Place, West End of Merrill. The handout that I, that is attached to the agenda was two pages, but a number of questions came up that I just handed out earlier that came up from what I saw in Melanie's report. But the first thing, can we go to the first page of, first page of the handout?
Neighbors of Lincoln School.
I am the neighbors of Lincoln School.
Yeah, so go to the next page.
Okay. My topic is where will people park at the Lincoln Center? We are asking that the council refer this to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee for investigation and study for two reasons. This is the first year, it's the first series of events. They don't know how many people. They don't know how, where people are going to park. We don't know the traffic. There was a parking plan submitted, but there were some problems with it. Oh, can you go, can you go to the map? Yeah, I'll be talking about this map probably a bit. But in the parking plan, in the parking plan, there was going to be another entrance to the Lincoln School between, halfway between West Merrill and West Stone. Now, apparently whoever put in the parking, put that together had not checked with Iowa highway codes, but I think as soon as Melanie saw it, she said, that's not going to work. It's too close to other intersections. So immediately there were questions about the parking plan. B1 is West Carpenter Avenue. There's not parking on either side. So we're asking that Carpenter, West Merrill, and Orchard Place, Orchard Drive, people call it both things, would be blocked off. The reason for West Carpenter to be blocked off is because there are two alleyways that run between West Carpenter and West Merrill. Those alleys are used by people who live on West Carpenter and do not have on-street parking. There are also people who live on Fourth who do not have on-street parking and people on West Merrill who don't have on-street parking. So they have to use those alleyways. If somebody comes in and says, oh, I'm going to park here. Oh, look, there's an alleyway. Looks good to me. I'll park here. So that's, the details are in this table. And then the last thing is about parking at Lincoln School. This is where Melanie's report gave a lot of good information. Actually, on, the Huffman's have said a couple of different things and I'm not sure which one's going to work for them. The first thing they said was that they, if they didn't have enough parking at Lincoln School, they would have buses running to a middle school. Well, that raises questions. How many buses will be running? How many people per bus? What happens when the building capacity is exceeded? How will they know that the building capacity is exceeded? If people arrive and they cannot go inside, where will they wait in December? I mean, I don't beat them, I'm not trying to micromanage, but those are questions that come up. I drove from Lincoln School up to the middle school and it took me fifteen minutes each way. And so if, if somebody said, oh, we've got, we can run these buses, it's going to take 30 minutes or more to get back and forth. So those are questions. How will the Huffman's plan for crowd size since they aren't selling tickets by date in time? They've gone, they had, what, 7,000 people the last year? And they've got people from all, all the bordering states and there aren't any reservations. People are just showing up, which is fantastic for a business, but how do you handle how many people are going to be able to come into the building? And that's also going, part of one of the discussions, what, I think Paul brought it up or someone else said, well, our people are only going to be staying 45 minutes so we can cycle through the parking. That raises another issue about parking if there's a steakhouse. Then in the October 15th, 2024 article in Southeast Union Ledger, Jim said that he didn't believe that shuttles would be necessary since he feels that there is enough parking at Lincoln School. From the site assessment attached to the, to this agenda, the Lincoln Center currently has 62 off-site parking spaces. And then West Stone could be used for 140. But as Melanie's talked about, you could have 1,500 people in the building and that's a lot of cars. And where do those people park? I've lived in neighborhoods where there was parking overflow. And if somebody comes in and blocks your driveway, blocks your garage, it doesn't help if I call the police and get a ticket written. If I need to go to the drugstore, the grocery store, leave for an airport, or take somebody to the ER. So where are people going to park? And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. I think you've brought up a lot of questions, certainly that, in more detail that Huffman's could consider and think through.
Because you brought up some good questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Campbell? Okay. Anybody else want to speak?
Yes, I'll go next. Hi, I'm Mary Jane. And I want to thank the members of the council. I want to thank all of you because I see a bunch of people who really care about Fairfield, even though we may have some differences, we have more in common than what we have apart. Okay. But we keep talking about this event and so it's going to continue to be an eight-day-per-year event, attended by 7,000 people. But there's a huge potential for growth here. To compare it to another nearby Christmas attraction, the Kiakuk City of Ice Display, which I hope to go to, by the way, is a drive-through event which draws about 20,000 cars every year. That's cars, not individuals. How are we planning for their growth? Because this is their interim. They've outgrown the space. They want to use this space. They want to grow this business. And it's a great business for the city. We just think it's in the wrong location. How are we going to help them control that growth? If, did I understand you right? You don't have any rules that you can enforce for them? Is that what I understood you to say? I don't know that much about city. You don't, there's nothing you can do once they get in there.
No, there are definitely rules.
Unless it becomes a problem and then you retroactively take care of the problem. Is that correct?
No.
No, that's not correct.
That's not correct.
I misunderstood. I'm trying to learn as much as I can about government as quickly as possible so that we can create harmony and peace and everybody can have what they want. But my concern is, is that they're creating kind of a monster and nobody's paying attention to the people who are going to be bowled over by the Christmas barbarians. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come to the microphone, state your name.
I just have a few. Thank you. I apologize for not having enough for everybody.
Sorry, just get the council members.
I got one.
I'm Jen Campbell, Orchard Place.
Thank you.
So what I just distributed is a printout from the Fairfield365.com event website where the Huffman's are advertising the whole, whole, whole holiday event. You'll notice that besides the Grinch, this year's event also features at least three activities from the Harry Potter universe. So this is something that's new, surprising. It wasn't ever mentioned before to the zoning and planning commission or to the council. The Grinch was already a very big popular draw, which expanded 2022's attendance of about 1,500 to 7,000 in 2023, more than fourfold. Harry Potter is a worldwide phenomenon which is vastly more popular than the Grinch. So how much will it expand now? The Huffman's stated in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that this could become a major tourist attraction or destination. The thing is, they're right. Is that the purpose of mixed use? What was the original intent when this district was slated to become mixed use? Was it small retail shops and home offices? Now we're not only looking at an event center, which is not allowed in mixed use, but a tourist attraction. A tourist attraction with large regional events drawing people from the surrounding states, as it did last year, according to the article in the, in the newspaper. Therefore, even if the zoning is changed to mixed use, in ordinance 1199, under purpose and intent, it states that, quote, "This mixed-use district is intended to ensure the mixed-use adequately protects and is fully, excuse me, compatible with and complementary to residential uses." Obviously, the neighbors do not feel this use is compatible due to traffic, parking, noise, and lighting concerns. And the ordinance is very specific as to what businesses are allowed. Nowhere does the list include an event center or a tourist attraction or even a community center. Event centers are generally limited to commercial districts. As far as a variance goes, in the appeal from the, in the appeal form for the City of Fairfield Board of Adjustment, it states, quote, "Conditional use and exceptions shall not be allowed in a particular district unless such use is specifically permitted as a conditional use slash exception," end quote. The form also states in item C3, quote, "Public considerations. The use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. It must be proven that a variance will not impair use of adjacent property, devalue neighboring properties, detrimentally affect the public welfare, alter the character of the neighborhood, or endanger the nature and purposes of land use plans. If it is determined that the neighborhood character will be disrupted by incompatible development, introduction of possible safety hazards, and creation of dangerous traffic problems, the requested variance shall be denied. We feel that large regional tourist attractions drawing attendees from the surrounding states would be incompatible with the character of the quiet neighborhood we live in. As you can see from the handout, the Huffman's are advertising the school as the location for the event before they even get approval for mixed use, which would still not grant them permission to use it as an event center. Will the Huffman's be permitted to hold the event at this location this year? We would like to think that there is more respect for this process, respect for the council and for the neighbors than to go ahead with something that hasn't been approved. Is everything just up to them, up to them because they've bought the property? Finally, while I wish hardship on no one, any hardship from the denial of this use of the property is self-influenced. Another point against granting a variance. The Huffman's did not do their due diligence in determining the actual zoning of the property before purchase and renovation and admitted as much to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 7. Therefore, I ask the council to deny the change in zoning to mixed use or at the very least, refer it to the Public Safety and Transportation Subcommittee for serious study on the impact of this use on the neighborhood. They should also restrict use of the property as a business until such time as zoning issues are resolved and require full disclosure of future plans for the facility. Thank you.
Under permitted use, I do see schools, including business, commercial, music, and dance. So.
Schools?
Says schools, including business, commercial, music, and dance.
Like a business school, a music school, and a, and a dance school. Those are all schools.
They're all event centers.
Right? They're all what?
They're all event centers.
Mm-hmm.
You're on the fringe of a 2,000-student event center. Somebody could argue that as far as the appeal in the other direction. That's one of the reasons the Planning and Zoning Commission questioned whether you could really turn down issues.
Well, I think, I think Melanie asked if, if, isn't it possible, when she was talking to my husband, isn't it possible for a business to just hold an occasional event? But I say that there is a world of difference between a business that holds an occasional event and a business whose purpose it is to hold events. That's an entirely different matter. I mean, and, and the, and the impact on the neighborhood being, okay, I mean, none of us would be here if we were just talking about pumpkin carvings, you know, small weddings, you know. You know, that would be fine. But what we're talking about is, you know, an event that will draw people from multiple states, bring in a lot of tourists. I mean, everybody loves tourists. We just feel like it's not the correct setting, given the infrastructure.
Mrs. Campbell, I have two questions. You used the word variance in your presentation?
Yes.
Well, how is this a variance? We're looking at changing the zoning from one zoning to another. How is that a variance?
Well, excuse me, my understanding is that if it was changed to mixed use, it would not allow for an event center and they would have to apply for a variance from the board of adjustment. I mean, if I'm wrong, please correct me. That's my understanding of the procedure, that they would have to then ask, well, you know, I want to use it for an event center. And they would have to be given that right by the board of adjustment.
Okay, so, okay, that's a position. It could be, you've heard that there may be, there could be some disagreement as to whether or not that is actually a variance. It may be that the zoning of mixed use allows for that sort of thing. But that's just my, I just want to understand why you're saying it. The other question I wanted to ask, or point I wanted to make is, I think I forgot it. I think I forgot. Ah, what would you want from the public and safety committee? What would you want them to do if it were referred to committee?
Well, okay, in Melanie's report, she talks about what the current state of traffic is. What I would like the Traffic and Safety Committee to study is what is the capacity of the streets? What are the streets that will actually be used and what is their capacity? And what happens when they get exceeded? Maybe what happens when they get exceeded is you just get a lot of traffic jams. I don't know. But I think it would be good to analyze, you know, what the, what the potential situation is.
Okay.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
And we're talking about, we talked about parking.
And we're talking about, we talked about parking. We keep talking about parking. We don't know where people are going to be parking. But I've also looked at how other event centers are, what zones they're in. The Sondheim, it's an event center. It's in a business district. The Washington Event Center, it's actually in a school, but it's, it's not in, it's not in a, but another one, let's say, Capitol Theater, which is in Burlington, that's in a business district. The Bridge View Center, business district. I keep finding event centers in light industrial, commercial, business districts, commercial. But this would be turning mixed use into commercial, which is not the, not the decision that's being voted on, as far as I can tell. And that's where we have that question about the variance.
I think there are some areas currently already, current, current mixed use that are, you know, they're not an event center like the Civic Center, but they are having events there.
What, which ones?
Music. Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, but we're talking seven, what, we're talking.
I know, we're not talking about as big, but we are saying there are, you know, there are music events, there's art events.
And we keep seeing 7,000 people, but that's not at one time. Not all of those people will be there.
We're talking 1,500 people at a time, easily 1,500.
Not at one time, maybe in one evening.
Oh, well, one evening, and, but with, with, okay, with the Grinch, some turnover for time, but there are going to be people who's, okay, 5:30, what is it, 5:30 to 8? It's not a lot of time if people are really into the Grinch and Harry Potter and interactive. Please notice on the Harry Potter thing, it's interactive. I remember one of, one of our child, we had a Christmas party, and we had a seven-year-old who went interactive on our Star Trek Christmas tree ornament, and he did it all night long. There are going to be kids who are going to stay there the whole time. So we're talking 1,500 people and 60 parking spaces, maybe 200 parking spaces.
To Terry's point, too, if I'm doing the math wrong, but if you're talking 7,000 people over eight nights, I'm coming up with less than 900 a night, not 1,500.
Oh, no, no. The capacity is 1,500 that Melanie came up with.
Right.
That's what I'm working with.
But.
Can I answer the traffic question?
Yeah. Please. And even Tom's point.
And I'm just going to say, all these are conjectures. We really don't have any idea at this point.
And that, that was my earlier point, that our actions are often reactionary. We can't, we, we can't make, issue permits and, and issue a co-compliance letter based off of parking issues that haven't even happened yet, you know? So that's what we're dealing with from the planning and zoning side. I did not include the parking or the street capacities in these because I had, like, I'd already spent two days on that letter, and, and you didn't need to go into all of that. So when we were talking about Highway 1, we talked about level of service of a street. They're ranked A through F, A being the best, F being the worst. F is something like you're sitting at a stoplight for, I think it's like 60 seconds or more, you know, it takes you that much, that long to get through an intersection. And I would say 90% of the roads in Fairfield are currently at a level A service. I want to say second in Main and second, or Main and Burlington and second and Burlington are a B during peak traffic times, so to put that in perspective. So the real rough calculation, or the rough estimates were that Fourth Street is already at a level of, level A service, assuming that, like, all 15,000 people, or sorry, 1,500 people leave at the same time, you are going to drastically decrease that level of service because they're going to be waiting. You know, it's no different than trying to get out of the high school parking lot after a football game or a concert. But once you start to get out onto those streets, they're going to rapidly distribute. I want to say Fourth Street had something like a capacity of 12,000 or 17,000 cars per day before it starts dropping into a lower level of service. So because Fourth Street is a well-traveled road without parking on either side, it has a very high capacity. Your bottleneck is going to be getting out of those, getting out of that parking lot.
Good, great, thanks. Does anybody else want to speak?
I know. Hi, Molly Sandberg. I don't necessarily live in the area. I live in Fairfield, but I don't live near the school. But I figured somebody needs to speak on the Huffman's behalf because they are really good people, and what they're doing for this community is amazing, and I'm so thrilled to be a part of it. And what I want to point out is, there was a question on a public forum that was posed about this. And the question was, is anybody worried about extra traffic on Fourth when the community center opens up at Field School? And a majority of the comments on this were positive. People were in love with the idea, and people are so happy that the Huffman's got this new building and are thrilled. And some of the comments of this I would like to read. So one of them was, anything that brings out of town or to your community is a good thing. Events like J.C. Huffman's Christmas and Easter events are wonderful for the Fairfield community. Another one is, there won't be a single place that's a good location in everybody's mind. With them buying the building, they can openly prep throughout the time leading up to their event. Parking lot and street parking throughout the surrounding community is much better and safer than the main highway. And then, the last one is, Fairfield is very lucky to have this family pouring so much into these events that brings people into town to support other businesses like restaurants, gas stations, dupees, et cetera. The building has sat empty for years, so will take some adjusting for traffic, as would any location. Will any location be perfect? Walmart's parking lot fills up. I could hardly find a parking spot there yesterday afternoon. There will always be somebody complaining. It's not every day, it's for a short time, for a few hours. It will be a ton of fun for kids and families to go to. Like I said, just give them a chance, let them prove that they can pull this off before you, you know, bring out the torches and pitchforks. That's all I ask, so.
Whoa, 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 it's not torches and pitchforks. Wait, wait, wait. I think these are people, these are people. I'm curious about the comments, where these people live.
They're all Fairfield. It's a Fairfield.
Do they live in the neighborhood? Do they live in the neighborhood?
No.
But they live in the neighborhood.
Probably not.
Okay. We know that probably that's general.
It's a, it's a general.
People from all over the community.
Yes. But I think the entire town needs to have a say in this. And I get the concerns, but I do ask the people of the neighborhood to work with the Huffman's, not against them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can bring all my friends here and say the actual opposite of what you said. Hello, Fairfield, my name is Patricia Bowland, I live near the school. And my, I want to thank Alex and Jan. They've really done a deep dive into research on this. I've been very thorough, very kind, and emotional, and a very emotional issue. So my question today, or my comment today is that, and request, is that the Fairfield Economic Development Association owns this website, Fairfield365.com?
No.
Who runs it?
No, that's our Convention and Visitors Bureau.
It is the Convention, which is owned by the Fairfield City?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Well, they should take down this ad. They don't have, do you not have permission?
Well, that, you know, that's a fair statement, or that's your opinion, but that's not what we're talking about tonight.
Yes, it is. Let me lead into the next part of the, what I want to say. Because it's owned by the city, and the city, I do not believe that the Huffman's have done their due diligence in this area either, because they do not have permission of very tightly-held brands of Whoville, of the Grinch, or of Harry Potter. Their domain of Universal Studios, through Warner Brothers, and also J.K. Rowling, for Harry Potter. So, you know, Fairfield Convention Center is, which is owned by the city, is, you know, making misrepresentations. They do not have permission to use these names or these brands at these events. There's no copyright on this. I mean, you know, someone can answer, speak to this, but that's what's bringing the crowds. If you, someone did a search on, you know, anything to do with Harry Potter, or, you know, the Grinch, or whatever, and there are only, you know, a few places, and it's like, you know, Universal Studios in Florida and Universal Studios in California. So, you know, this cannot be, should not be used. It exposes the city as well, because I'm putting you on notice, because, you know, if Warner Brothers, whatever, finds out that, you know, and I'm sure there might be a few people here who might write to them, you know, finds out that someone is getting 7,000 people and now monetizing it, last year they didn't charge, but even so, they're not allowed to use it even with no charge, without permission, because they're reaching, they're stealing, they're appropriating the names of these brands and using that to make money. So, you know, they're continuing to let this ad run.
Point well taken.
The city is participating in that, and I think it's another sign that there are, you know, I really thank Alex and Jan for all their work, but they're bringing up very, very good points. I'm opposing in, not anything personal, this lady here is saying that I'm, you know, thinking they're bad people or whatever, but they haven't done due diligence, they did not speak to any of the neighbors on my side of the street. I never heard of it until I got this, you know, inscrutable letter listing a whole lot of, you know, locations around the school. It never mentioned the old Lincoln School. If I had a map, I rang the council and was given the information. So they haven't been trying to work with the neighbors at all, and I just gave them the benefit of doubt, they made a mistake. You know, relied on the representation of the school representative who sold them the property, who told them that it was commercial. But, you know, still, they had to do their due diligence, and this is a problem. I think, I think without using those names, we won't get as many people, but, but maybe they will, because it's, you know, cumulative. The longer you're in business, the longer you do these things, the more people come. So just to be clear, they had 7,000 people in total, according to Mr. and Mrs. Huffman, but the maximum they had at any one time, I thought was 1,000. 1,200.
But that wasn't all at once.
1,200 all at once, but, and one, one time. But, yeah, so, you know, for that, there's no good reason why this shouldn't, can't be held at the convention center. That can be worked out to have it there, so it's also taking money. The taxpayers are funding, are partly funding the convention center, so they can have it there. That's the biggest objection, is this Whoville. Whoville is also owned, that term.
Okay, so do you have a comment about why it should not be mixed use? Sorry. Do you have a comment about why it should not be mixed use?
Well, for all of the following reasons.
Okay.
All of the reasons I've stated.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes.
I'm Andrea Vardy. I live on Merrill Street, right across, so I'm looking at Lincoln School from behind. I don't know anybody in our neighborhood who wants it to be mixed use. We all feel this is being forced on us. It is actually mostly retirement people, aged people there, and we've all lived there. I've lived there for 20 years, and I'm now looking at, you know, a possible real noise problem. The funny thing is that I didn't really think about the parking or the, I'm glad they've thought about that. I was worried about noise, because I enjoy my quiet life. Right now, there's one light out there, which is the street light, which already gets in my window, and, and the Huffington's are talking about a year-round event center, and, as well as other businesses like the Steakhouse. So we're not talking just eight nights around Christmas time. And in fact, they've already added on six nights at Easter. But they're also talking about weddings, meetings, food fairs. I mean, food fair is fine, but personally, I think it really lends itself to being a park, that, that particular property. But if it has massive lighting, I mean, you said there's, there are some kind of restrictions on lighting, so I don't really know, but it needs to be restricted. Because that all comes in our windows, but noise needs to be restricted, and by noise, I mean music. You know, like, somebody does an outdoor wedding, it only takes 100 people at a wedding to have very loud music, or if it's an evening event, like a birthday party, the same thing. And I have to hear that music coming in my windows. I mean, right now, I enjoy having over a group of people for a movie, and I've checked with all the neighbors, they don't hear it, even though I can play it quite loud inside my house. And, but if they're, but I do hear the band on the town square, if there's a band out there. So I'm definitely not going to be able to, I mean, I'm going to have to send my friends home, sorry, we got too much music in the house right now. Or, or, you know, well, you get the idea. And I lived on the town square once, and it was fun, actually. It's fun to be in a, you know, I can picture myself in some great little town, like Boulder, being in the town. But when you're, when you're on the town square, those buildings are really thick, they don't let, I don't remember having any noise problems inside. I remember occasional loud motor. You didn't hear anything inside, because the buildings are built for that. Our buildings aren't built for that. And if we have year-round events where any day of the week and any evening, I don't know if there's going to be loud music in my house, I don't know that I can go to sleep because of a band out there. I just think that it's going to change the neighborhood so much that, yeah, really, if it really gets bad, I will move away. My neighbor's already saying she's almost definitely going to move away. Another person said, geez, maybe we better just think about moving away. A lot of us are thinking that way, because it's going to change the neighborhood so much, unless you put restrictions on it. Now, I don't understand this mixed-use idea, because I don't see how any of those businesses on the list will ever be compatible with the residential neighborhood. But I can see, you know, that one over on Second Street, those restaurants there, I went in there once, it was very quiet, actually. This is not a loud facility. I saw like, you know, half a dozen cars parked outside, there are few people sitting there quietly eating. That is an entirely different thing than a big wedding party outside with loud speakers, or a big birthday party, or fairs with bands, and, you know, that really changes our neighborhood. And I can tell you, I don't know anybody in our neighborhood who wants that. People are scared. They're really scared about this. I heard one person say, well, our property values are going to go down. What I always think is, they may or may not go down, I don't know, because they're already pretty low in town. But, I mean, we each have as much in our homes, in terms of what we paid for them, and mortgages, and unbelievable renovations, those are old houses that all the systems had to be improved. We each have as much in each of our homes as the Huffington's have put into that facility. And so we feel we really just need to be respected for that, and we shouldn't have our neighborhood degraded by a situation. I'm not saying something couldn't work in there, but I'm.
Yeah, because eventually that building will degrade even further, so.
Right, I mean, I don't have any problem with it. It's a school, it's a public facility, Indian College is fine, but we're speaking to an entirely different kind of facility right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ryan Horstfield, I live on Carpenter. So I've lived there for five years, and this is the first I've ever heard of it, this last week, I'd ever heard this proposal. And my main interest is, I think the council, the city is being very short-sighted about this. It seems to be some errors were made in developing the proposal and the property without checking the zoning. But I really think a longer perspective of this property, the opportunity is there for keeping it residential and denser residential, raising the building that's there, and putting a condominium or apartment building there, because there's a great shortage of such housing. People can't afford single-family homes. So there's a huge demand for multi-family buildings, apartment buildings, condominiums. So I think it's probably the only site within the city limits that is suitable for a new apartment building. I don't, I can't see another one. So I think it's, it's a jewel for that opportunity, and it's quiet and compatible with its current zoning as residential. And I really appreciate Jan and Alex's work, and particularly that report that Jan read. It was, the key issue that I saw from that was that I didn't appreciate the comparison to Redtopia, because that's a commercial zoning already.
No, it's mixed use.
I'm sorry?
It's mixed use.
Yeah, but it was, it was initially manufacturing, so isn't that commercial?
Yes, but it was, it was changed to mixed use so that they could do what they're doing there.
Right, yeah, and so.
And the, just so you know, the comp plan has this area as mixed use for future. That's why Planning and Zoning suggested and recommended to the council that it become mixed-used as well. Just so you know, a little background.
And, but it's currently residential? It's what? It's a school zoning? Well, whatever. I just think it's a great, I think we're being short-sighted, and I'm sorry that the Huffman's have put in all that money. the Hufmans have put in all that money, but they made a mistake.
Well, it would've been, it might be, it would've been great if somebody came along and bought that building and put in condos or something, but that hasn't happened, so.
Well, the, the city didn't solicit invitations, basically.
The city didn't own it.
City didn't own it.
Doesn't own it. Yeah, the city doesn't own that building, so we can't solicit it.
School district owned it for 14 years.
The school district owns it?
Yes.
Okay, and they sold it to the Hufmans?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll clarify the case. Great, appreciate your comments.
I'm gonna point out a couple of items that I'm sure everybody already knows. When you plan a business and you study it quite a bit and you plan it out and you get ready to go and you put it into operation, it can blow up in your face and it may not be successful. Just because you worked on it, did a good job planning, doesn't mean it's gonna work. Even if you have a current business in another place. I wanted to point out that if anybody can remember back far enough, there was a little conflict in Vietnam. A lot of this affected a lot of our lives. When the troops went to Vietnam, they were instructed, and God help them if they didn't listen, to listen to the people who were already there. Because they know what it's really like. We have a lot of people here who are already there, living there. I'll tell you that on Merrill Street, if there are three cars on it, that's the traffic, Jim. You can't just drive up to your house. And, uh, so that's one point I want to point out to you, that you should listen to the people who are there already and take it very seriously. Because it's not like looking at a piece of paper and... I trust you to do your best.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I just want some clarification. At the conclusion of Melanie's report, she says the issue before the city council is, at this time, is the rezon from R2 to mixed use.
Correct.
Somebody said it wasn't, that it was from school to mixed use, but it's from R, it's from residential to mixed use. Is that correct?
But school can be in any, in any zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't got any notes or anything, but I'm speaking from my heart and from experience of their Christmas holidays. I've been Santa Claus in the town of Fairfield for the last five years, three of them up on the square, two of them with the Huffman family down at their business. Uh, as far as the worry of, uh, wild and parties and carrying on, I have been right in the trenches of their Christmas celebration every minute. And there isn't anything that is out of line beyond a Christmas celebration. We bring people in to Fairfield. Do they have Christmas celebrations in their own communities? Yes, they do. But they chose because of the event that the Huffman people are putting on, that it brings business to Fairfield, the restaurants, the hotels. And just to give a couple of examples, uh, you know, Santa Claus isn't always a fun job. I didn't realize that and I agreed to take it on. Last year there was a family that came down from Des Moines, young seven-year-old girl come up and got on my lap and they're family and I don't know these people, mom, dad, boyfriend, girlfriend, grandpa, grandma, neighbor, cousin, standing six feet from me. And I do the normal interview with the little girl and I say, uh, what's your name, you know, where are you from, uh, where you go to school and then kind of what you want. Will you normally visit with me on the lap? This little girl looked up at me and she had tears going down her cheeks. She brought me down and whispered in my hair and she says, can you help me get my mom and dad back together again? I'd challenge anybody in this room to answer that question. And with that, I give her a little hug and said, I'll say a little prayer for you sweetheart. You know, this is, this event and this is what it's bringing to the community, the Fairfield community. People are coming because of that. They aren't wild partying families. They're people that's wanting to give their children an opportunity to experience a Christmas event that is special to them, therefore they have come here. One other, uh, thing that I experienced, a grandchild, a granddaughter and a grandmother from Galesburg, Illinois drove over. Uh, the little girl got up on my lap, she's 10 years old, visited with her, found out what she was wanting, we got her picture taken. And I could tell as I visited with her, she was having a little trouble constructing her sentences. Well, after she got her picture, she left, grandmother come up and give me a hug. She says, I wanna thank you people for doing this. She said, my granddaughter suffered a stroke this summer from a brain tumor and we're over here making Christmas memories because we're being told this is her last one. Now, this is what this family is supplying not only to Fairfield, Jefferson County, but the people to where they can come and experience, uh, Christmas experience that means a lot to them. They aren't coming to party, they're coming to enjoy the Christmas experience. And I'm, like I said, I got Santa Claus across here, I'm not related to this family, but what they're doing is very beneficial for this community.
Thank you. You got the right beard for it.
Bless you.
I'm Elaine Hughes and I live in the neighborhood. I've been there for 13 years and I don't think any of us who are residents are saying this wouldn't be a lot of fun for a lot of people. I can see why people, you know, as you said, are so excited. No one's saying that it wouldn't be fun and that it, the project itself or the projects wouldn't be great. It's the location. And I just ask, do you want 900 people, even if it's over a period of a few hours, suddenly in your neighborhood? I don't. 700, 500? No, I don't. It's a quiet, very peaceful neighborhood. We bought it. I bought my house thinking I was living in a residential neighborhood and I would very much like to s, to keep it that way. And I think any of you who have homes in residential neighborhoods might very well feel the same way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So are there any other, well, it looks like we have somebody get up, please, if you're gonna, uh...
I'll make it quick.
Yeah, if you've already heard the statements, though, we don't need to add, so make it something new.
I just, um, I'll try to make it new, that I live in Orchard and it's our dream home and if the neighborhood, all of a sudden, already, I can't recommend that somebody buy in that neighborhood. Now what am I gonna do to sell my house? And I would move if I had to. So that's what I'm saying.
Great, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Paul Miller here, uh, of Miller Law Office. I'm here on behalf of the Hufmans for a lot of, uh, reasoning tonight from the, uh, the public and why this shouldn't be here and I understand their concerns, but ultimately as a board, there has been no legal reason given tonight for you to deny the rezoning. The thing about Fairfield, uh, in order to remain relevant, we've gotta be ready for change. There's been a lot of change in this community in the last 10, 12 years, whether it's school closures, uh, we've done a lot. We've built new libraries, we've built a civic center, we've built a police station, we've done a lot. And there's always some amount of opposition, no matter what you do, you can't get things just exactly right. But in the end, Fairfield's gotta remain relevant and to remain relevant, you gotta find new uses for old buildings. That's the green thing to do. We don't want to just see this building go in there and be demolished. Uh, it's a cost that no one could afford. The business and the entrepreneurs in this community, they need a city council that remains consistent in their decisions when it comes to zoning. If you go making different sets of rules for various organizations and people in this town, uh, you're not gonna add to the stability of the business community, the longevity or the reliability of this community. So I'd ask tonight that you, uh, seriously consider this and approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you live in the neighborhood?
So, hang on, hang on. Patricia, you could, you know, don't ask him any questions, please. Yes, Maggie?
Look, the thing is, is I, my mother and I have a house on North Fourth Street. She's an elderly woman, she's been here for over 40 years. So nobody is denying the Huffman's wonderful events. That is not the purpose. These people did a lot of research and gave you really good reasons why it is not a fit for this residential community. Most of us are, are pretty much almost at retirement. Uh, we're used to a really quiet place and the congestion, the light, the noise, it's going to push people out of this neighborhood. I know it will push my, I'll have to, we'll have to figure something else out because we, what, it's, it's a practical scenario as well. What if we need to get in and out of our driveways with a thousand people coming through? How, how are we gonna accommodate that? It, it's not a personal thing where people are trying to deny Santa Claus or successful businesses or happily ever afters. It's about whether or not it fits in this small, quiet residential neighborhood. And I think these people have given a lot of really good evidence, um, and reason why it isn't. And so the people who've been speaking who don't live in the neighborhood, I don't really think that they should have that much of a stake in this. We're the ones that live in this neighborhood. We're the ones that pay taxes in this neighborhood. We're the ones that feel strongly about it. I mean, there's practically 40 people on this neighborhood email scenario who don't want it. And it's not because we don't like the Hufmans and Santa Claus and whatever else is gonna go on. It's because we're concerned about the onslaught of traffic and noise and food smells and lights in a very quiet neighborhood. And I ask every single one of you to look inside yourselves, separate from the money and the success of the town, which, which this is, not having this event center, there's not gonna detour success in this town. But look inside yourselves and see how you would feel if you woke up to 100 feet from you, a buzzing parking lot and congested traffic and you can't get out and noise until all hours. And we have no proof that that isn't going to be the case, especially with the fact that it's constant, you know, they're, they're so successful, which is a good thing, that every year it could be double and then double and then double and that it, the neighborhood can't, there's not the capacity for it. And, and I think that that's something to really take seriously and dig deep inside yourselves as if it's you that has to, because we're the ones that have to handle that and decide whether we can and, and consider selling our properties. And, and some of us have been here 45 years in the neighborhood. So I just, I feel emotional about it because the rest of these people do too. I've met with all of them, we've met with city, some city council members and we just want our voice to be heard and, and we want a shot at everybody when they make the decision thinking about what's right for us, because we live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. One more.
I'm Richard, I live in, in the neighborhood and it was sad to see the Lincoln School be unused for many years. And I would propose that whatever solution we come to, it would be for children. When I moved here, uh, in 1997, there were 10, 10,000 people in Fairfield and now there's 10,000 people still in Fairfield. So we're not growing, so we need a center for children. If that will help, let's vote for it, for increasing our population and for human evolution.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I live in the neighborhood, uh, also North Street and basically I live here temporarily. I mean, I travel from Washington DC to small town and I'm really travel here to enjoy peaceful life here. But it's about me. But also I learned that my neighbors, recently I learned a lot of people around, whatever my situation is, my neighbors are wonderful people and they're all older than I am, much older. And you know what? I'm just so integrated to spirit and soul that I cannot imagine that with some time younger people can hear them because we want fun just right nearby. So I didn't prepare to speak about this, but I want to tell that I really will consider feelings of my neighbors in order to do what we're asking to do. About children, we always can go to Washington DC, Chicago and have these huge buildings what I live around and I experiencing absolutely horrible traffics in beautiful, like, in my neighborhood in Washington DC, absolutely new and beautiful event centers for absolutely restaurants and whatever you're trying to do here. So I have to go around 40 minutes to my home when I have to drive like seven minutes in normal, no, no traffic hours. So I know what it is to be very uncomfortable, even if I have more energy and also looking for something interesting going on. So, and when I'm coming to Fairfield, I always consider feelings of my neighbors. And I'm coming here because it's really opposite with really big cities bringing to us, a lot of stress, a lot of events, a lot of stress and traffic, a lot of stuff we don't have here. So I just cannot imagine if something similar will come in the next block and people will be stressed to get to the hospital, to Walmart, because we need something simple to do and we cannot. I mean, it's absolutely different lifestyles that people have to be accustomed to.
So you're, you're speaking against?
I'm speaking.
Against the mixed use? Is that correct?
If it's very rough, it's very rough against, but if settled, it's possible to walk rules through in order to make people not suffer from it, because I know how tough I am and it's still trouble to walk through. And people in those 60s and are not used to do this, it's really not pleasant. It's softer to say not pleasant. And by the way, I'm a little bit younger than this crowd, but I also was looking for retirement in this area, whatever will happen with my life, because it's peaceful and meditative environment. Not everybody do this crazy meditation stuff, could be very deep in knowledge, so, but everybody used to live this safe pace of life that nobody disturbing them and suddenly it will be that, something different for them. So I'm, I'm really care about my neighbor, neighbors and I would suggest to walk around what can be done there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'm gonna pop, close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for all your comments and, uh, Becky, her, that's writer's crap, I think.
I, yeah, I know.
And running out of room on her paper. Okay, so with that, we, again, this is the second reading of the ordinance. Uh, consideration of the rezoning of Lincoln School area from R2 general residence to mixed use district. Um, so there, again, generally are, there are three readings, though this is the second reading.
So Mayor, if I may comment at this point?
Go ahead.
There's this concept some of you have heard called NIMBY. Not in my backyard. So I live in Ward 2. This is a Ward 2, this is a Ward 2 area. And so this is very concerning to me that, that there's a proposed significant change in the use of that property. And I do think if the Hufmans are successful, and I actually, I hope they are, that there will be a substantial change to the character of the, of the neighborhood. But, but to borrow, to take, to go back to Vietnam that someone mentioned, sometimes change comes. And unfortunately, it means it's gonna affect some people differently than others. I think we can do two things at once right now. I would propose that we move, that we table consideration of the ordinance, move the, uh, for review, this, this suggest, this suggestion to change the, uh, the zoning to the Public Safety and Transportation Commission, our committee, to review it more carefully and come back with a recommendation at our next council meeting. It is still the case that we could, if we, if the council chose, could, um, not have a third reading and move from second to third reading at our next council meeting or the meeting, or the meeting after that and still have this ordinance passed, if it were to pass, um, in time for the Hufmans to, um, hold their event. But I think that there's enough concern from the neighborhood that the P S and T, Public Safety and Transit, Transit, Transit. Safety and Transportation, Transformation, Transportation Committee needs to look at it very carefully and come back with a suggestion one way or the other, or what we can do. I heard the phrase conditional. If we can sum, there may be some workout. I think it'd be good for the Huffman's to be present at a P S and T meeting. There may be some sort of workout which would satisfy the concerns of the people who live there and still allow the city to grow using that facility. So, my proposal is before we consider the ordinance, or I would suggest is that we table the ordinance, table the second reading, and instead we move to refer consideration of the ordinance to the P S, the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
So, is there a second to that?
I, I'd like to see one.
You made two motions at the same time. Which one are we voting on?
Well, you, you want him to, you're asking him to change it?
Well, one motion would be to table it, the other one would be to refer it to committee.
Okay, I prefer, well, I'm asking that, then, whatever motion is the most, gets the, the issue referred to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, that's the motion I'm making. So, I'm moving to refer consideration of the ordinance to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee at this time.
Okay, so is there a second by Mr. Rowe?
Mayor? May I see?
Yes.
It's a hypothetical question.
Yeah, I can't.
Well, it's a hypothetical question. We don't know what is going to be realized if it were approved.
Yeah, as a member of the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, I have no idea how to even quantify something that is so theoretical in nature. I understand the considerations, I do, and I understand the concerns. We're not determining whether it's conditional or permitted use, number one. That's going to be going to-
The Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment, right? So, we're not going to be determining that. You know, as far as protections for the neighborhood, those exist in the mixed, our mixed-use ordinance, as Melanie talked about. And I do believe that there are even like parking setbacks in there that we haven't even broached. It restricts lighting. It maintains, it's supposed to maintain the characteristics of the residential neighborhood, as you pointed out. And there's a burden on the business owner to make sure that the, that the, the people who are coming to their business, you know, their customers are having a pleasant experience. And that's going to be, so, I mean, I think as Melanie pointed out, there's a burden on the business owner. There's a burden on the city if at some point in the future it seems like the parking continues to be an issue, the traffic continues to be an issue. I mean, I, I don't really see that there's anything for us to consider at a committee meeting when it's really just about the rezoning. And I would not be able to, in good conscience, say that we could not, that we would, we would prohibit the rehabilitation of a building that's just going to continue to degrade.
So, I'm not, I don't think we're suggesting, or I'm suggesting that you come back to the council, the recommendation that the ordinance shouldn't be passed, but you might. But I understand that a P S and T meeting, a committee meeting, can only have a recommendation to the council. Can only have recommendations. The council makes the final, makes the final decision.
What would we be looking at?
I don't know. I think you'd be looking at the ordinance, though. I think you'd be considering the concerns of the citizens who expressed themselves this evening.
But we don't even know what the use is going to be.
I think we have some, I think they were talking about what the use was this evening. They were turning it into an event center.
But we wouldn't be-
And I also think if you have the meeting, you'll have a number of people who appear who will tell you what they anticipate the use will be. I think you can look at the Fairfield 365 advertisement for Ho 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 Holiday, and it, it's pretty clear what the use is going to be.
But we don't determine whether or not it's permitted or conditional use.
I'm not, I don't think the P S and T would be determining whether it's permitted or not, but I think it'd be useful to have an opinion from the P S and T as to whether or not. This is something we should move forward with.
Melanie?
Well, I think Elizabeth covered most of my points. My question was, what safety information can I provide the council with that I have not provided you with already? I mean, I've been analyzing the streets and the lighting and the parking, and I'm curious what additional information the Public Safety and Transportation would-
Planning and zoning had all this information as well, didn't they not?
They didn't look at it because that's not what planning and zoning considers.
Okay.
Okay, so-
I just wanted to point out one thing, too.
Questions and discussion.
We hear a lot of, everybody agrees and nobody wants and stuff like that. And I am very sympathetic to your, to everything said tonight. But if you look at the map between the current mixed-use zone and the requested mixed-use zone, half of those properties have already requested that their property be changed to mixed use. So, it's not that nobody wants this or everybody's against it. Not even everybody's been contacted, but the ones that have been contacted, half of, half of the total properties have already agreed to voluntarily change theirs to mixed use. So, there is support for it also.
I think those are not resident, those are-
They are residential.
They're rentals, are they not?
Well, they're residential, so.
But they're homeowners?
I don't know. It doesn't-
I think they are homeowners, because I think we couldn't get ahold of the, for the rent.
Can I say something? They are homeowners. They are the owners of the home. The rentals that I did get signatures on, since they weren't, they were rentals, we weren't able to use them because that wasn't the property owner. But those were the owners of the homes.
But they're not residing there necessarily, right?
Pardon me?
They're not residing there necessarily.
They are.
No, the owners are residing there, yes.
They didn't get signatures from the-
From the rentals?
From the rentals, yes.
Thank you for clarifying, Teresa.
Even though I did, we didn't use it because they weren't living there. That was correct.
Thank you for that clarification, Teresa.
How many homeowners did you speak with, you recall?
However many is on the screen. I don't really recall the number, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Six homeowners, two businesses.
Can you read the motion back, please?
This is to table the consideration of the second reading referred to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
I, I think he changed the motion, though, to just refer it to-
Right.
Refer it to-
Just refer.
Public Safety. And it was second by Matthew. So-
So, I'll call the question.
With no other discussion.
You just learned to call the question.
Right? I think there is, I don't think there's any more discussion.
Is there?
It can't be. I called the question.
No, you can't, you can't just call a question like that.
So-
I think good heavens up there.
With no other discussion, we're going to call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yeah.
Flornoy?
No.
Esti?
No.
Toohill?
No.
Ham?
Yes.
Kness?
No.
So, that's four to three?
Yes.
So, the motion's failed. It will not go to Public Safety. Okay?
Okay. Then I might make a motion to table consideration of the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
For what purpose?
For additional time to consider it.
Is there a second? Hearing none? That's, that motion will not move forward. Let's go to ordinance 1255, the second reading. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Toohill. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Doug Flornoy. The motion is to move the rezoning of Lincoln School from R2 general residence to mixed use. This is the second reading. Would move to the third reading on the next meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
No.
Rowe?
Yeah.
Okay, so that passes six to one. So, it will go to the third reading in November. Okay? Ordinance 1254, consideration of amendment to fees for yard waste tags. This is the third and final reading.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 1254.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Kness. Any discussion? The motion is the amendment to fees for yard waste tags. This is the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Thank you. That was approved unanimously. Under the mayor's report, I would like to, first off, set the December meeting for Monday, December sixteenth, if that's okay with everybody. Do we need the motion on that? Let's, just in case, do. Okay. Okay. I mean, we usually try to get it kind of in the middle of the month of December. We had, just have one meeting. So, can I, is somebody okay?
I will make a motion.
We'll make a motion for that, okay?
Sixteenth, is that what you said?
Yes, Monday the sixteenth.
Second.
Okay, moved by Toohill, second by Gandy. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that passed unanimously. The work session, let's see if I split those evenly. I kind of gave you strategic priorities, what you, after we went through our scenario and our dot democracy, as Doug calls it. So, these are strategic priorities that came out of our work session on Saturday. Housing, we were to pick three. I've given you the top five. Concrete plan for divesting city lots, acquired lots, fire station, the public bathrooms. Prepare for growing, grow Fairfield, the Sunrise Terrace subdivision. Implement building codes. Four, identify barriers to homeownership. Five, more LMI housing. Under downtown revitalization, we said pick two. I gave you, again, the top five, just so you understood kind of what order they were in. Get empty buildings occupied. Support current business and attract new business. Two-way streets. Research first floor downtown to retail only via code. Renovate public bathrooms. On new personnel, we were to pick two. We discussed whether we needed, well, we discussed the potential for needing to new employees to take care of kind of growing pains and support our current staff. So, director of planning, director of planning and zoning was our top pick, the utilities clerk and IT liaison each had three top picks, so those were basically tied, and the director of finance came in last. Under other, the priorities were website design update and to continue to review and improve agreements with MIU. Fairfield schools, grow Fairfield, chamber, CVB, FACC, twenty-eight E's that we have, looking for cost sharing, any expense reduction improvements. And somebody wrote in possible grant writers, so I stuck it there so you, everyone knew that that was there. Code enforcement priorities, houses, rental inspections came in second. So, that says to me that you would rather have rental inspections under code enforcement versus the fire station. Now, I'm going to just put in a caveat, it may have to be a little of both.
I found this on the web.
At this point. You did?
I guess I didn't, I didn't realize that was part of that question.
Yes.
So, just know that my response, like, didn't, I don't care where it lives.
Okay.
As long as it's happening.
Well, I guess ultimately, I think it's going to have to have more discussion.
Yeah, for sure.
Animals at large, noise complaints, number of animals, yards, overground, grass, weeds, junk, junk vehicles. Number five, parking, right-of-way parking, abandoned cars. Six sidewalks, seven trees. So, I know Doug and Melanie were kind of looking for a percentage of time that our code enforcement officer would work on these things. I think we've given them the priorities, now let's let them work out really that percentage, because they know, they know that a little better, I think, than council does and myself. You know, they know the day-to-day. And so, I think, you know, if they can help the fire, fire department by maybe relieving some, and we, and, and code enforcement takes over some, let's let them work that out and see what, what the best mix is going forward. So, those are your priorities. And I think as we move to our work study sessions, a lot of these are going to start coming up on the agendas, okay? I want to congratulate Mr. Gandy. He became a certified elective municipal official designation. So, he took all the classes. Congratulations. So, encourage other people to talk to Paul and see if they want to do that, too. Also, I wanted to let you know the Arbor Committee has applied to the Alliance Trees Forever grant for fifty more trees for our community. Thank you to Steve Taylor and Laura McCormick for putting that together. Appreciate it, and hopefully-
Melanie?
And Melanie.
And Melanie! Sorry! I didn't know you were involved. Thank you. Okay, so, that's all I have. City Attorney report.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. You'll all be happy that I'm trying to be.
Yes, because it's after nine.
Looking at your work session, a little bit about code enforcement, we started to talk about a little bit at the work session, but three of the things on here as far as trees, and that means tree trimming, yards, overgrown, and some of the stuff that's on the parking. Those kinds of citations and violations Weston runs into every week. I know that I suggested maybe we treat this kind of like what we used to do with bad parking habits, like parking sideways when you're supposed to be parking diagonal, parking in a no parking zone or parking in a disabled zone and those kinds of things. But we now let people put their money in a yellow envelope and deposit it in all, basically paying the cost of the ticket, so to speak, and they don't go to court. They opt out of going to court, and it's under an infraction process that we did specifically related to parking in the past. But I think Weston and I will bring you back something that focuses on yards, weeds, junk, dealing with tree trimming, and maybe some of the other things that go on in our parking, and see if we can't give him an easier way of dealing with some of these citations that will get results. Nobody likes to have their lawn mowed courtesy of the city if it costs them a hundred and ninety-five dollars. If they get a ticket that says pick up your junk, and the first time they pay court costs going up to the magistrate, and it's fifty-five dollars and probably fifty to a hundred dollars for the minimum, that's a bad lesson, too. If they get a ticket for fifty dollars the first time, maybe they're not going to be so excited about that. But the plan on the infraction process would be that each time there is another ticket issued, the code enforcement officer bumps the penalty, and it's all structured in the ordinance. So, the next penalty would be a hundred dollars. The next penalty would be two hundred dollars. And then it's up to the council to decide how far you want to go on that stream. But by the time a person gets a two hundred dollar yellow ticket for not picking up their junk, they're probably going to be motivated by that time, at the same time that we're not using up court time that we use on other types of cases on getting somebody's yard cleaned up. So, we'll bring you back something that looks a lot like your parking ticket infraction procedure, only it'll be for something our code enforcement officer can use repeatedly. Other than that, I think probably I could, I could comment a lot on some of the things that got said here tonight. I think I'm probably better off-
Yeah.
We'll save it for the third reading, okay?
Okay. Okay, committee and board reports, environmental and franchise.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, we met today with a representative from Waste Management, and there are, there were some members of the public there. It's to discuss our contract with Waste Management, which is a five-year contract. It's up in June twenty twenty-five. We had some concerns with the proposed contract. Right now, the proposal includes an increased monthly rate, and it would require residents to have a new bin that would be similar to the recycling bins that we have, but it would be for Waste Management and just for trash. Obviously, the benefit of having those bins are yet to be determined, I guess, really, who it benefits.
Waste Management does.
Yeah, apparently I'm not supposed to sell it that way. So, so, but, but we're looking at an increased monthly rate, required- So, so, but, but we're looking at an increased monthly rate, required bins for trash, and then there's an increased annual adjustment that's included in the contract, so right now our annual adjustment is 5%, oh, excuse me, 3.5%. It's been varying, varying over the past five years, but right now it's at 3.5%. And our monthly rate is $16 and something cents, I don't have my notes in front of me. The proposed increase to the monthly rate would be in the neighborhood of $22, and then the annual adjustment would be 5%. So, um, not, another concern that we had was there would be fees to citizens for recycling contamination. I think that in order to adequately inform the public of what recycling contamination means, we would have to do some additional education, because right now, I think everybody's operating under the assumption that glass is recyclable, but apparently it's not. So, anyway, that was a concern too, not only would there be a fee to citizens, but then it would potentially increase the rates to the city. So, those were just some of the concerns that we had when reviewing the contract. We countered with maybe increasing the monthly rate, but leaving the annual adjustment where it is. I think that's what we landed on, right, that proposal?
So, what, 5% per year for five years?
Correct. And 22 something dollars.
Right.
And then inflation factor thing goes away?
The inflation factor thing goes away.
Okay.
But I mean essentially it's absorbed into their.
Right, 5%.
Yeah, exactly.
So, the current rate is what now?
3.5%.
I mean, the current monthly rate.
16.
$16.79, I want to say.
And you want to go to what rate?
$22 and something more.
So that's.
I mean. Oh, thank you, Marg, Marg was there.
What is that, $3.5 more, roughly? How much more is that?
A little over a dollar a week.
Huh?
A little over a dollar a week.
How much percentage is that from the monthly rate that we have currently paying?
I don't have those figures in front of me, Paul.
It'd be 25%.
It's a 25% increase, plus they want to increase the monthly, the yearly adjustment 5%.
Absolutely, yeah.
Plus, they want to charge us additional money, I'm sure the Senate, charge us money every month in perpetuity for the, the, um, the trash receptacle, correct?
Well, that would be absorbed into that increased monthly rate.
How much, the reason I'm asking these questions, because we went through this several years ago, and I was, I think I was on the committee, and they want to charge something, back then, that was five years ago, something like $3 plus a month for the receptacle. We asked the question, how long will we be paying this? You know, we figured that it's gonna be paid off at some point, and they said it for the life of the contract.
That's probably why they don't itemize it now.
Right, that's why I don't. Because I think it's, I think it's a moneymaker.
Well, the deal there too is that they will replace the bin if it's damaged.
If the damage is due to their error, if they will not replace it if it's the resident who is responsible for the damage.
And then the two, the resident has to buy another one.
Essentially.
$70 or $80 probably for that.
The problem is.
I bet it's more than that.
Have any options, really.
I know.
You know?
We don't?
It doesn't seem like it.
Well, we can do what we did last time, which we just said, take that out of the agreement.
Oh, well, yeah, we're negotiating different things.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I'd be curious to find out how much is allocated to the receptacle.
We should get it itemized, I think.
Yeah.
That's fair.
The price for those is on their website, you can go in and see what they would charge.
Like retail?
A resident, yeah. You, because I've done that for somebody else. You can go in on their website and see what they charge for each of the containers if you have to replace the one that you damaged.
I will say, they are proposing that everybody get a 96 gallon size container, which is larger by about, what, like 30% than what they will.
That's the same as the recycling.
Same.
Right?
It's the same as the recycling, but right now, if you have two regular-sized trash receptacles, that's only like 66 gallons or so. So it's definitely more than what people can now throw away. We talked about maybe reducing the size of the receptacle to 65 gallon size, but it would only impact by, I think it was like 25 cents, so really the monthly rate instead of 2227 would be 2202. So, it was not very significant.
The advantage of the 64 gallon containers, which we discussed last time this came around, was they're more manageable by people, especially elderly people. They have to move them down from their house down to the curb and bring them back up again.
Right.
The volume of the 94, I mean, we had people coming in with how much trash they collected in a week, it wasn't even a 13 gallon, you know, plastic bag that would fill your kitchen trash can, that's what they get in a week, there's no way they're gonna fill up a 94 gallon
Right.
container.
The value to waste management is that this is the same size as recycling, that recycling is used, the machine, they use a machine to
Exactly.
Throw it in, same thing.
That's right, people wouldn't have to get out and manually.
So they have.
They're addicted to these large containers in and around their homes, in their garages, they just don't have space for it. Aside from managing it to get it down to the curb and back again. We have an aging population.
Right, and I brought that up. The other thing that concerns me, when, when you have the elders that maybe have, you know, the equivalent of a Walmart-sized bag per week of trash, because they're just not that active and they're not doing that much. So basically, the answer that came back in a very polite way is that it's averaging out over all the households. So, it's asking an elder to be paying the higher fees, even though they have very little trash, for those that are having more. The other thing I was concerned about, this new contract has a lot more language about, let's say you overfill your can, because they now have AI on the machines, the, the truck can literally read that garbage can and determine how heavy it is, and if it's too heavy, they'll leave it. So, the 90, what's the, the number?
96.
96, yes, sorry, because it doubles the weight, so you can have up to 192 pounds in a can. Now, having recently just thrown some encyclopedias into, you know, as cleaning out a house, I do know that that can get pretty heavy pretty fast, so I was kind of glad to know that we have that. But, I just wanted you all to know that this new contract is citing, if they take it, it would be an extra $10. If they leave it, then, you know, people would know why, because the AI is now reading those cans and knowing if they're too full, or if they're, you know, have content within them that is not, should not be picked up.
There is a, there is a trash can available right now, right, a green lid roll can? And what's charged, what do they charge for that? Do we know?
Years ago, it was like $80 a year, I thought they had that.
$80 a year?
Years ago, when we last looked at this question, I don't know what it is today.
So it actually.
They are trying.
Each and every year.
But it'd be actually cheaper under the new contract than paying $80 a year.
It was a real thing.
So their, their pricing is, they, they want to get us all on one single size of can for the whole city.
Sure.
That's, that's where it comes down to. At this point, we're negotiating, we're not, we, we didn't give a response today. They need to get back with us on the glass thing, because that was, that was a whole new concept. Because we know that we've been putting the glass in the, in the bins.
Well, that creates a whole new challenge about educating people about
Yeah.
what they can recycle, what's permitted, what's not permitted, the rules change as consumers who buy the recycled material change their demands, and they raise their specifications for the recycled material. I'm wondering if we're not going to end up discouraging recycling because we're penalizing people for making mistakes.
Right, there's that concern, I will say, from their vantage point, it's getting harder and harder to find people to drive their trucks. So, their quest is to make that as comfortable, and the less the driver has to get out of the truck and come to the curb, the better for them being able to hire. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because AC and, and heat was a big part of his conversation. The other part that was new to me, that I had never heard before, if we do have someone who is elderly or who is handicapped, and they cannot move the bin to the street's side, the driver can get out if it's kept in front of the house, they can get out and move it down to the street so that the truck will pick it up, and then they are required to also return it back to the, the front of the house.
That is only what, yeah.
With the doctor's permission, or, you know, a doctor stating that this person does have this condition. So it would be up to the resident to get that doctor's notice to Waste Management. Just telling you about the things that we learned today that we had not heard before. And, so, those are things all factoring into this. It's getting, they're trying to take all the manual out of the, the trash pickup as possible.
But not, not off the consumer though, they're taking it off their employees.
Well, and, and that's why I said, you do realize there are people willing to, you know, pay for that service where it does get moved, so.
At the expense of my husband, if you can train him to recycle correctly, everyone else will be easier.
Right.
Right. I'm still trying to train him.
Well, and.
So it can be the test case for the education.
Every household has a question about whether something should be there or not. And I'm just learning about the batteries, and at Simcoe, we're real concerned about lithium batteries going into the landfill. We don't want them in there at all.
Yep.
And there is a place that you can drop those off, by the way.
No, go to everybody's. Okay, administrator and department reports, who wants to go first? Looks like Melanie wants to go first. Jumping, wants to get, go home. I can tell.
On the project update, the only thing I really want to point out is, attached to the project update are the lead service line letters that are gonna be going out to residents, ones that either had galvanized, noted galvanized materials, unknown materials, or the lead service lines. These, this is the document that DNR requires us to send out. So, when you get a call from a citizen wanting to know what is this, there is a copy for you. Other than that, any questions on the project update? And then also attached to the council agenda is the October EPA report, required every six months. Rereading our compliance order, we are actually required to keep this posted on our website as well, so that's the other reason it's attached to your agenda. So, and the only thing really to point out is, so there were eight sanitary sewer overflows in the last six months. Most of them were related to Grease Lightning Lift Station not being complete, and they should be, um, they should be resolved once step three is done. There are other ones related to, um, oh, well, right outside. Right next to Hoffman's, was right one of the other sanitary sewer overflow, but right next to the 34 lift station. And that's due to some partially clogged pipes, objects in the pipes that should not be flushed. And we'll work with some education in that neighborhood to help reduce, reduce that, and hopefully because this, 1462, right outside Hoffman's, has never seen overflows before, and we had two in the last six months, so we'll work on some education with that area and watch it a little bit better, so. Otherwise, other than that, it was, I mean, it was a good report, and still no overflows on the east side of town where step one and step two has been completed, so. Any questions?
I will also be brief, I've had a lot of complaints, again, I think it's perpetual in regards to goose and deer populations, and this time of year, deer are moving around, and quite a bit more, you know, since it's rut. So, anyway, I, I've been digging into that, trying to figure out something that we can do. I will say that I have actually signed some municipal deer permits, and I was, I was quite cool, that, you know, I, I've heard that we have them, but then they're starting to hand them to me, so. Anyway, that might help, but another property that we have been dealing with that, that our code enforcement officer would like to either go to committee or to study session, is in regards to 609 North Fourth. I will tell you that the code enforcement officer has worked with this individual, he's living in his garage, because the house is uninhabitable, we've tried to seek out social services for him, and anyway, there needs to be some substantial discussions of what we need to do next with this property, but something needs to be done, and other than that, that's kind of where we're, we're headed, and that's it for questions.
Okay, let's get that on agenda for the study session.
Yes, ma'am.
It's coming up. Okay. Under, we'll adjourn, but we just note, our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, seven, because Monday is a holiday.
Are we, are we meeting at 6:30 starting yet or not?
Yes.
So that.
We will meet at 6:30.
For the work session?
For the work session.
The work session and meeting on the seventh.
On November 12th.
Yes, November 12th, 6:30, and then regular council meeting at seven.
You're gonna put that on the city calendar?
Yeah.
I have my calendar synced, so it just shows up, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we, well, she'll send out an email too. So, I would take a motion. Okay, Mr. Toohill moves.
Second.
Second by Kness, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion adjourned. Who's got the Dodger game score? Who's winning? That's what I want.